All right, to call to order the January fourteenth, twenty twenty, meeting of the Rattlin City Board of School Commissioners, if you'd all please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would the Secretary please note that all Commissioners are in attendance, with the exception of Commissioners Flo and Pensick.
And Student Representative.
And, yes, Student Representative, as Ms. Lassen as well. So, the first item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda as it is currently crafted?
I would like to make a change to the consent agenda. There is an addendum in the personnel that, for reasons, we do have to put it in as a acceptance and a acceptance of employment, acceptance of resignation.
Okay, all right, so that would be added to the Personnel Memorandum, which is on the consent agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda? All right, then, we will move on to the consent agenda, which, of course, includes the minutes of the previous meeting, Personnel Memorandum, and also the Clerk's Addendum to the Personnel Memorandum, and the Tuition Rates, which is for Action Item, and we had reviewed those previously, so if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Actually, I just had one quick thing.
Sure.
I think it accurately captured me when I said that.
What specifically?
On page two, on the.
That's okay, no.
At the top, where it said, "The policy chain is not intended to increase the number of public meetings," and I'm sure that's exactly what I said. The only thing I wanted to add today was that because we're going to increase committee meetings, that there would be no net decrease, so that was.
That is correct.
Yes.
We'll mark that in the minutes as well. Okay, thank you. Any other? All right, then, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Host? All right.
... standing, which is kind of odd, even though I'm supporting it. It's because of the personnel.
Understood. It's understood. All right, so, any communications for the board? I know you have something, oh, maybe not.
No, I don't have anything. This is for later.
All right, if anyone in the audience would like to address the board on items not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, then. We are going to have Ms. Solomono do her report, and she's going to be doing it for both Student Represent-- well, maybe not, just. Haley, that's right, okay, so you'll cover for your section, then.
So, Pharrellon High School midterm and final exams were this week. Last week, RHS welcomed parent and incoming ninth-grade students to an open house for the class of 2024. On February seventh, U.S. Attorney Christina Nolan will present to eleventh-grade students a talk in short film called Faces of Recovery. The film tells the story of athlete Justin Goulet, who injured himself in a weightlifting competition. He became dependent on heroin but recovered after being prosecuted by U.S. Attorney Nolan. The story tells of how recovery from drug addiction is possible.
Great. Okay, thank you very much, Hannah. All right, I'm going to ask Superintendent Wach to tee up this next presentation on alternative programs.
Thank you. Come on up, and Patty going to join you?
Yes.
So, we've been talking for the last few months about the need for us to find the right places for all students, and we've talked about expanding learning opportunities through developing alternative programs, particularly K through eight, expanding the Allen Street campus for students who are better served there than in the regular classroom, and to find hands-on learning environments with an outdoor education perspective for some, in a way that students who are exhibiting behaviors that show unhappiness in the regular school setting can find their niche, can find their place, can thrive. And there isn't a school district in Vermont that has a continuum of services, K through twelve, that provides alternative programming for all students, and particularly for students who might have some emotional or behavioral needs that can be better served in an alternative environment, and we may end up being the first one to do that. We've looked at some models in other places, but there isn't a school district, K through twelve, that provides that. You know, because last meeting, you were at the Grove Street campus, we just had a graduation of, for some of those kids, you know that we provide that program, the Allen Street campus now, which has reached into seventh and eighth grade, and soon fifth and sixth grade, which is how it was originally designed, helping students there. So, the idea here is to make sure that all the students are in the right places that best serve their needs. And so, I've charged Pam Reed, who is sort of coordinating this effort with the help of the other principals, to look at alternative programs that would better serve the needs of these kids, and to make su-- and in so doing, improving the behavior and the academic achievement of all the students in all the schools. So, providing learning environments outside of the traditional school setting is what we're looking at, and it may not be for special ed students alone, it may be for students who are not eligible for special ed, but whose needs can best be served in a non-traditional environment. So, I'm very excited about this. We've done a lot of work at this point. We're not here to get any kind of final approval, it's just sort of FYI, so that you know what we're thinking, and maybe you can challenge some of our thinking, too. So, that's why we're here.
Thanks, Eve. Thank you all for having us tonight to talk about expanding our learning opportunities for kids. As you know, students come to us with a wide variety of strengths and needs, and even though we offer a wide variety of options already, data and observation shows that we, there are still a population of students whose needs we are not meeting. And through conversation and meetings, discussions, surveys, we've identified that we need to create educational programs for primary to intermediate-age students that are therapeutic in nature and are designed to modify behavior in environments specifically designed for that purpose. We need to strengthen our current programs to include strategies that better support social and emotional development, building a community of resilient learners, and we need to provide experiential, hands-on learning opportunities for students who have become disengaged from their educational program, helping them to find purpose. So, to address those needs, we're planning to expand what we offer for students. We will create a dynamic program that integrates hands-on, sensory-rich, community-based learning opportunities with social, emotional, and academic instruction for students in primary to intermediate grades. This will be in addition to the programs that are current offered, currently offered within the building, excuse me. Our anticipated enrollment for that program is fifteen to twenty students, and the cost will need to be shared between general and special education. Another pathway to better meet the needs of our students will be expansion of Allen Street campus, which Dave mentioned. Allen Street, most recently, has served students in grades seven through twelve, and they integrate behavioral health, social-emotional learning, and academics into a comprehensive program. Each student's educational program looks a little different and varies based on their academic needs, their interests, and then activities focused on transitioning out of high school and into adulthood. And then our third expansion is something called a school within a school, and that's different from the first two opportunities that I talked about, as it's not so heavily focused on social, emotional, and behavioral development. It's geared towards creating an alternative pathway for students in grades seven through nine to meet academic standards. Patty and the team at the middle school has done a great deal of research about a school within a school, and so I'm going to turn it over to Patty to give you kind of a summary and idea of what that actually is.
Thank you, Pam.
So, basically, a school within a school is not a solution to a problem. It's a program that aligns with best practices that are articulated through our Rutland Middle School's vision and mission and the State of Vermont's Act seventy-seven. So, Rutland Middle School's mission admits to the challenges of teaching adolescents, citing that the unique characteristics of students at this level require special curriculum, teaching strategies, programs, and assessments. And the current system that we have has some impediments to that, such as limited schedules, sorry, and ability to challenge each individual and provide support to allow students to achieve their fullest potential. SWAS, as we call it, or School Within a School, is one of a specialized curriculum, special teaching strategies, a different program, and different assessments that will allow for more personalized learning opportunity for all of our students. Excuse me. The current Rutland Middle School model, although it works for many of our students, truly doesn't meet the needs of all of our students. So, rather than attempting to force these students to conform, we believe it's time to rethink what a school can look like for those kiddos. So, our school within a school would open the doors to redesigning our institution rather than forcing compliance with these individual students. Providing this best-practice opportunity to this particular group of students will ultimately benefit in the entire Rutland Middle School population. Not only will the program, excuse me, address an increasing tension in Rutland Middle School that is negatively impacting the school culture, but SWAS' success has the potential to become an innovative lab school that will lead the entire district toward pedagogical revolution. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I don't know if you want more detail or.
And perhaps as we get into the questions of it all, the more things will flesh out. So, I'm sure you're wondering about the finances of it all, just thinking that might be on your mind. So, expenses for the first two opportunities, both the alternative for primary to intermediate grades would be, and Allen Street campus would be, a shared general education and special education expense, and whereas for the school within a school, that would need to be from general education expenses or revenue. So, the, what we've done is we have reallocated our resources within the current budget, and we'll allocate some grant funds to help offset costs associated with expanding the opportunities for students. So, I'm sure we're going to have lots more opportunity to talk about the specifics, but I'm wondering, before we conclude, if you have any questions or comments.
Hurley?
Have we considered, be careful on how I'm going to phrase this, a partnership with other districts or entities to look at addressing the needs that Smokey House was a big pullout when we lost Smokey House, the Eckatt Farm in Benson, those who might even need residential? Have we looked at pairing up with any other agencies or districts to address some of those needs, too?
Yeah, so I feel like there's a lot of components to that. I think the first one, let's talk about community agencies with the same mission. We have paired, we have partnerships with Rutland Mental Health. I'm also part of a few different community boards, as is Rob, with that focus and mission. I think that as far as community resources, we have, I think, we're up to forty school-to-work and in community learning opportunities partnerships, including farms and things like that. It's a tough season in the winter, but we do have at least ten students that go out to serve the community on farms. So, looking at that Smokey House component, but we also have partnerships with Killington and, I think I've mentioned those before, the school-to-work partnerships.
And VAC.
VAC, yeah. So, Sheldon Academy is also a school within our community that serves students with behavioral challenges. We've worked with them as Lehigh, also in Holtney, so we've used our resources within our community. As far as partnering with other school districts, yes, we have talked about it, and what comes, what comes back is we have enough students in Rutland City to fill a program. Should we get to a point, though, where we have, one of the goals of this expansion is to also build our capacity within the school system to strengthen our, I should say, at the building level, so that we can better meet the needs of all students. Should we get to the point where there are open space in our programs, we would accept, just like at Allen Street Campus now, students from other districts. That would help offset some of the other costs and be community-minded.
And bringing some students home, too. That's important. That's what you're getting at.
So, the other piece, yeah, as far as expense goes, residential, things like that, students who we have identified as needing an alternative, we would be paying quite a bit of tuition to send the students to either Lehigh or Sheldon Academy or residential, lots of other entities. We, by not sending them to other programs, we will save that money, which is quite, I think I figured out that the cost of five or six kids going out is the cost of almost the whole program, where we can serve fifteen to twenty.
I was going to ask, do we know what the tuition is that they charge, and does it equate? So, you're saying roughly five at either one of those institutions, then, would be able to cover our costs here?
Yeah.
Okay.
To serve fifteen to twenty.
Right, okay, thank you.
Dina?
Just to clarify, the alternative that you're presenting are the expansion of the program from going to the younger population and the school within a school in the middle school? I'm just a little confused. Is it?
There's three things that I'm, yeah.
Three separate, three separate opportunities that may exist at the same time?
They'll all exist at the same time. So, the first is serving our primary to integrate intermediate-grade students in an off-campus program that's therapeutically designed to meet the behavioral challenges and growth. The second is to expand Allen Street to include some younger grades, and the third is the school within the school.
Okay, which could serve seventh through possibly ninth graders, depending upon how that transition could work.
So, can I have one more? So, I guess my loving challenge, my loving challenging question will be in terms of the, especially the younger ages, the K to, let's say, K to four. Would it be worthwhile for us to explore, and this may be a loaded subject, the opportunity to invest maybe in a city-based preschool to collect them even early, we talk about the early intervention, early intervention, to collect a base earlier on and then feed those primary schools a much better readiness level, so we may not even, so for those younger, young, 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 young ages, we may not necessarily need those type of, or maybe we even will seek a bottom-up kind of movement even into the older ages. That, that's the only thing that's kind of keep bugging my.
I'm thinking like a universal preschool, universal pre-.
Like a universal preschool that will be under the care of, of, kind of like what we've seen in other supervisor unions or districts in the, in our surrounding areas that, I can assume I've may, might have seen some changes in their overall issues as a result of that, especially in the younger, and I know that kindergarten readiness has been an ongoing.
Yes.
Issue for us, and I would think that it will be our, in our best interest to at least ex- explore the due diligence of that process as part of this overall, and I'm not, it's not that, I'm not opposing the work or the, that type of process that's going on now, it's just something that has been kind of nagging at me a little bit.
Nagged at me, too.
Allison?
So, I had a question, I think you sort of just partially answered one of them. One of my things was each of the three programs, the actual physical space, so the first one that you proposed, I think you just clarified, the primary through intermediate will be off-site?
Yes.
But you had also mentioned, another question I have is that the, it would be in addition to the therapeutic classrooms that we already have?
Yes.
So, they would be different programs, or?
Yeah, so the therapeutic programs that we have now within our schools, we would be expanding upon that for students who have had that opportunity, but they're still having a difficult time finding success, and part of that is because of being in the general school environment, so looking for a smaller space. We have a variety of ideas, we're exploring the, using the Pier Point Building, but others as well.
Okay, and then obviously, the expansion of Allen Street will be at Allen Street, and school within a.
I just want to say that Scott has designed schedules and space so that it's conducive for the five through twelve.
Okay, and then the school within a school, I assume will still be in the physical school building, based on the name.
Well, could be.
Or, okay, so what, I guess, could be, so.
Could be, depends on what's available for space and cost.
So, we could even look at possibly, looking at an area within the school to do a little work on that area and see whether or not that could be.
Okay.
We're in the process of looking at alternative sites, as well as looking at an area of the school to renovate.
Okay, which leads to my second part of the question, is when you said that the current budget includes those reallocations, does that include the physical space, or are we just looking at reallocating manpower?
It will, because this has to be budget-neutral. We have to apply grants and repurpose what's in the, what's in the budget for this, because you're going to be approving a budget later tonight, hopefully, and the alternative programs are expanding learning opportunities. It's assumed that the budget that's approved will support part of that. Some of the revenue will come from students returning home and the tuitions that are now kept within the school district, and also from grant money that we have, because this is such an innovative and exemplary program that it actually qualifies for a federal grant program, at least for startup costs, because, as I said, there's no district in the state that has a continuum of services for all kids, kindergarten through grade twelve.
Hurley?
Do we have an approximate number of those who are out of district?
You mean, you mean that would, there's, there's currently six students that we identified as needing an alternative program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Cam?
Oh, do you want to go first, Joanne?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Go ahead, you might actually just take care of my question. I have a feeling. Thank you, Cam.
Well, maybe not, because I'm, I'm just curious, because I like to sort of see the matrix. Do we have projections as to how many would be in each of these? So, like, are we serving, obviously, if they're the full-need students, and if I use the wrong terms, please correct me, because I'm trying to just distinguish not-label, that the, this is going to be fully implemented, or is it going to be a pilot? So, what's the total number of students we, I guess I'll keep it simple, the total number of students we would expect in the three different groups?
Okay, so, for the primary to intermediate grades, students fifteen to twenty, we are looking at adding approximately between five and eight to the Allen Street program and school within the school.
And for the school within a school, we're really looking at a pilot and would like to start with about five, six, seven, somewhere like that, and then expand to twenty.
We're hoping for next year to expand to twenty.
For next year, and probably a gradual expansion, so, but we start with a smaller number.
And has it been, well, I guess I don't know who to ask, has it been flushed out as to where the reallocations are coming from? Because we're just looking at spreadsheets, and so, like, for example, I'm concerned how much would need to be coming out of the contingency fund, because we don't have specific line items that we know.
Nothing out of the contingency, it would come out of revenues from grants, revenues, expenditures that we're making now for sending kids out of the city to either residential or day placement, mostly day placements, and the reallocation of money. It would not come out of the contingency fund. This has to be revenue-neutral, we have to be able to pay for it, and.
Well, we've just had some other projects that didn't end up being revenue-neutral, so I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but it's just that this is a rather novel idea that has come forward, and it seems like we should have had a little more heads up, and I know you have been advocating some of that, and it's actually excellent. Are these guaranteed grants, or are these that were still competitive that we might not get?
So, we have enough money, this rollover money this year and next year for the startup, and as we ramp up the numbers, there will be tuition coming in from other schools or school districts to make the model work.
And, just, sorry, Joanne, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would basically be like, okay, instead of you being teaching grade two in this building, you're going to teach in this building. Am I correct, when you talk about the allocation of resources?
For some of the positions.
Okay, so, it's really just reassignments and not so much an allocation of resources?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
For some.
For some.
For some, yeah, no.
Just want to be careful that, yeah.
Yeah, no, I just, I think, part of that question, I think Cam was looking at, is that where, how does it become neutral, and it's sort of like a reassignment of their duties.
Matt?
Oh, Joanne.
Oh. Well, no, she had deferred earlier, so I didn't.
I guess I'd just be wondering, you know, no, never mind, I'll wonder later.
See?
We're going to come back to you.
I'm sorry.
And you can wonder.
No, I think I'll wait, because I.
Wonder later.
Yeah, wonder later.
Okay.
When you, as you devise programs like this, is the movement of students between those, between these type of alternative programs and the mainstream programs intended to be fluid? When the, I mean, am I correct to assume that part of a mission is to return?
Yeah.
Kids to like a mainstream setting?
Absolutely, yes.
Is there like a, do, do kids, could kids move fluidly during the middle of the year?
Possibly, yes, and much like what we do with the Allen Street now, if a student is ready to transition to whichever school they're coming from, let's say, the high school, we start, we can do that transition mid-year. It's similar to that. It's up to individual teams to kind of outline what that process looks like and how slow or how fast it goes.
And is there, can I ask a second?
The other, and so I'll say that's the other piece in thinking about location, is that we want to consider locations for programs to be close enough to school buildings where it can be somewhat of an easy transition.
Right, and so is there like a lot of, will there be a big professional development need?
For some, yes.
With our teachers, to get them ready, over like the summer?
Yes, and there are some teachers who would be ready to serve in that capacity, yeah.
There actually is, if I may speak on behalf of the school within a school, there's been a number of professional development opportunities that teachers have taken at the middle school that actually prepare them for that type of a project-based learning curriculum, so that's really what the curriculum would look like. And I just wanted to say that if you think about, from a middle school perspective, students leaving a sixth-grade classroom where they have one classroom teacher, and then they go into a middle school setting where there are many teachers that they have to navigate, you know, personalities and whatever that might be, for some students that's super challenging, they go into a smaller than you like a school within a school, and suddenly that individual, more individualized attention that they get really allows them to flourish and get the academic work that they need done, and now they can be ready to go back into, you know, the regular classroom, the Rutland Middle School.
And your question about professional development, the other thing that I see as needing to be done this summer is a whole lot of curriculum planning and teamwork, so that then they're ready to meet the students on the first day.
I don't even know whether I'll try again.
So, it sounds great. What will be given up? Will there be any offerings or courses or?
I think she's looking at you.
Things that, so Nirvana has occurred?
No, no Nirvana, but can you maybe expand on your question just a little bit, because I'm wondering.
Well, it's kind of revenue-neutral, and we're going to provide more services, and we're going to provide more continuing professional education, professional development, and we're going to have more individualized attention, so I'm wondering what gives, where, you know, we're reassigning people, what did they do before, and what, just, you know?
Mm-hmm, so we do actually have a position that is a person who could potentially transfer, so that's a position that's already in the budget, and then you are taking some students out of classes, and then you're going to put them in another classroom, so from a cost standpoint, as I said before, it's not, there would be the potential for another hire there, but as Mr. Wach says, that would be absorbed by the consolidated grant that we have, so for those startup costs to begin that.
And the recaptured tuitions, yeah.
And the recaptured tuitions, so that would be what would be paid for from that standpoint. As far as the supply, materials, all that, that is part of the budget, that we can certainly utilize that, we don't need additional, you know, not a hundred percent certain about the location at this point in time, so I couldn't really talk to that. A parent educator who's already on, on staff could potentially be utilized to help support that group, so I think we've looked at, you know, the big costs, if you will, of that program.
Thank you.
So, tonight was to try to lay out the concept, and when we have specifics about location, we'll be back to you, obviously, because we're.
I'm wondering again.
We're a school board approval.
We can.
We can re-wonder then.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Look forward to hearing, uh, hearing your progress on the development.
Thank you.
All right, I will move on to the superintendent report.
Okay, this'll be quick, the first thing that's not on the agenda in the report is that the State Board of Education's gonna be here, uh, next Tuesday. They've chosen Rutland, it starts at, Bill is at two o'clock? Two o'clock, so it's pretty interesting, you know, we had the governor here, we had the secretary of education here, who was kind of fascinated by what was happening at Rutland and Stafford. We've had the NEASC reviews with all kinds of accolades for the folks who work at Rutland High and Stafford. And so, they're sort of on a roll, so here you have the State Board of Education, uh, choosing Rutland High and Stafford as this site to do this, uh, sort of statewide, uh, investigation of proficiency-based, uh, education, proficiency-based learning. And I know that there will be, they're gonna hold hearings from two o'clock until eight o'clock with a break, uh, for dinner that the culinary students are gonna provide, I believe, and, and the community's being invited, uh, so that teachers and parents and students can sort of testify, may not be the right word, but to provide information about the pros and cons, what's happening around the state. He saw that it was working in Rutland and chose Rutland, both, uh, the chair of the State Board, John Carroll, and, uh, the secretary of education. So it's pretty exciting that they've, they've chosen Rutland. I think, uh, Greg Schillinger is gonna, Melissa Connor and Greg Schillinger are on the, that I saw on the witness stand, so to speak. Anyone else from Rutland that I missed?
Adrian Weld and Abby Werdowski.
Oh, right.
Student to be named later.
And a student, okay, yeah, this is great. So that's just FYI, I know you've got a meeting that night, but if you wanna go in the afternoon, it'll be pretty interesting. The second thing, I've talked before about the beautification projects, I just wanted to let you know that, um, it's alive and well, and we are planning out, uh, a timeline that will go through August, because much of the work will be done in the summer, some of it during, uh, school breaks. And the areas include signage to provide district-wide, uh, a common branding, a common signage. The work, the good work on this was done a few years ago, Greg Schillinger led the effort, was very inclusive, no need to reinvent the wheel. So, that sort of branding, uh, appears both on our website and in, on some of the stationery, uh, mine's from twenty years ago. But it, it is all sort of, uh, as it should be, standardized, and, and it shows that we're one district, we're together. And the idea is that if you, and I know I've mentioned this before, but some of the buildings haven't been improved cosmetically in a long time. You know, we still call it the new high school, but, but, uh, there's some flooring there and some painting that needs to be done, some of it the original in different places. And we need to spruce up every one of our buildings, so that when you walk into northeast, northwest, RIS, RMS, Stafford, Rutland High, Allen Street, you get a feeling this is an attractive, upbeat, inviting place, where kids wanna learn, teachers wanna teach, parents feel good. And it's not that it's not that way now, but we really need, uh, sort of some cosmetic, uh, improvements. So we'll be looking at signage, landscaping, painting, flooring, um, improving security in a couple of places, and laying that out in a, in a schedule right up, uh, through August. And I'll be back to you with, uh, what is going to occur when, it's pretty exciting. And with the signage, we wanna make sure, uh, there's some consistency to it. Because, as I've said before, I'll just say it one time again, I won't, I promise I won't say it again, if you improve the decor, hopefully you'll enhance the decorum. And so, um, I'm hoping that will take place, uh, the decor and the decorum. And we definitely are gonna make the cosmetic improvements in, in the schools. So, very excited about that, I've, I've got lots of information, if you have, do you have questions about it? Or do you wanna just wonder about it for a bit?
I, I just have one question. Will I, when next time I need to go up to northeast, I'll know which door to go into? Because there was no sign telling me which door, where to park or anything.
If that's not on the list, can we make sure it is on the list?
Please, because I went in the back door and not the front door, apparently.
It's interior and exterior signage we're looking at.
Cam and then Allison, I think Cam, you might have had your hand a little bit before.
I was just curious as to what the total project for the beautification is, and, um.
The budget?
Yeah.
Thank you, Cam.
Some of it will come out of our budget, some of it.
No, I was just looking for a total number.
We don't have it yet, because we haven't put it to bid, and we haven't done estimates. Some of it we can do ourselves, some of it may involve some, uh, parent volunteering along with our own staff, uh, you know, parent-teacher groups. It depends, uh, and when we come back to you, we'll, we'll have that number, okay?
Allison?
So my question was, um, flag poles at the high school, is that on the list? We had talked about it last year, separate flag poles, um, do you possibly have?
Oh, I thought that kinda went away, we were looking at three of them, or, oh, I'm sorry, I interrupted, I interrupted.
You are, and then, that's the last I heard of it.
I don't know, I was not here then. Does anybody know, what the status of that, Michael or Bill or?
We have researched putting in flags, uh, new flag poles, but no, we have not, we have not planned that as a project, yet.
What was the rationale for that, not to take up board time, just talking about flag poles?
To be able to fly special flags sep, on a separate pole that closer meets statute.
Right.
And provide more opportunities for student voice if there was a separate.
Right.
Michael, let's put that on the list.
Flag pole.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Other ideas that you've thought about over the years regarding the look of the schools, ins, interior, exterior? We've gotten a lot of, uh, suggestions from teachers and principals from the schools themselves.
I think for me, one of, always been my issue is the wall, um, that's down at the, uh, middle school, and making sure we clean up between the wall and the fence and.
Where there's twenty shopping carts this week?
Uh, yeah, there's that there too, um, and I know it's a historic wall and all of that, and I think that can be looked at, you know, so, that's just.
What wall?
You know, the wall that used to be around the Baxter Estate?
Oh, okay, I am.
Okay, yeah.
It's lined with Walmart shopping carts right now.
Our property or city property? Is it our property?
It's your, our property, yeah.
What street is that on?
Oh, um, Grove.
Grove, yeah.
Anything else for Dave? All right then, we will, uh, move on, we'll wait to hear more on the beautification projects and spruce up as, um, as the weeks progress. All right, so now, uh, we get to the meat of, um, the budget deliberation for fiscal year twenty-one. Mary Alma has, um, she sent out, uh, detailed information, um, yeah, and, and probably hands some of that out. I know I didn't print mine out, so it would be helpful, and I'm gonna ask Dave to, uh, lead us off on this, and Mary Alma will provide more information. So, we have to have language to the city clerk no later than, I think it's next week or whatever, that, um, so we're gonna walk through this tonight, and, uh, hopefully we'll come to some resolution, and so that we can get to the city clerk. Okay, I think we're all set. All right, so Dave, do you wanna?
Yeah.
This, this is subsequent to our meeting back in December when we met at the Grove Street campus, and we instructed the administration to come back with a budget, uh, with a threshold of, uh, I believe five percent in, uh, per pupil spending. Uh, no more than five percent, come back with a budget adjustment in that respect, so we're gonna have them present this evening on that. Dave, have you lead off, and then Mary Alma will walk us through.
Thank you, so the big picture is we've come back with a three point two percent recommended increase in the, uh, pre-equalized pupil spending. So, we took seriously what you suggested last time, we've incorporated those suggestions. A lot has changed, uh, and this is true of every superintendent and every school district in the state. I've talked to our regional superintendents, some of the numbers from the state regarding enrollment have changed, uh, equalized pupils have changed, up to and including this week. At the same time, uh, the V-Hi initiative, the, um, health insurance initiative statewide was passed, which not only increased healthcare costs statewide by twelve percent, but also created some new costs in the second half of the next fiscal year. Everyone's dealing with that. So, uh, they're pretty busy in Montpelier, but there's a lot that's been changing. And so, what we did is we dealt with our best available, uh, information, and as you can see, um, what's in this budget is, um, what we had talked about last time. We did, um, reduce some line items, we, uh, zero-budgeted, zero-based budgeted, non-salary, uh, expenses for supplies. There had been a two percent increase, it's flatlined at zero. Uh, we took out some, uh, of the lesser priority maintenance projects, uh, we adjusted some, uh, staffing, and, uh, for those people who are retiring, we included, uh, replacements, uh, of newer teachers at a lower cost. I think that alone saved a hundred seven thousand dollars. So all of that together helped us arrive at, at this number. Maybe afterwards, there are some things that I'd like to say about the future and some strategic planning, and for Joanne's committee, uh, the committee that looks at budgeting, when, uh, maybe it's your committee, but whoever's committee it is, because, uh, I think the district needs to get involved in, uh, some strategic planning. One of the things that changes this is the weighting formula. Do you know what that is? So that's the way in which the state allocates money to school districts based upon, um, a number of factors, one of which is poverty. And, uh, there's, I'll just go into this now and then we'll move on to it, but there's a new weighting study, uh, done by professors at UBM and some experts from Rutgers and some research institutes, legislature commissioned it, came out Christmas Eve, a hundred fifty pages, and in it, it recommended that the poverty factor, uh, raised from, I think, point two-five to three, two-five, sorry. Something along those lines.
It was, it was around three, there's, there's, depending on the circumstances, it was three point one-seven or two point nine-seven.
So that would be a huge impact, because we have such a high poverty level, and the study, uh, indicated what we already know, and that is a scientific correlation between the need for social services and special ed, uh, services, um, and poverty. So, we need to track that with our legislators and others going forward, because, uh, that could result in a fairer allocation to the city. So, the last thing I'll say is that when you look at the draft budget voting, uh, language, that includes the equalized pupil spending of three point two percent higher. We do not know at this point, nor does any school district in Vermont know exactly what impact that's gonna have on the tax rate. Because there are so many other factors that are at play. But we know that our pre-equalized pupil spending would go up if you approve this at three point two percent. One thing I wanted to mention to you is that the per equalized pupil cost with this budget would be about fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. That's less than the state average, and when you take the eight school districts that are in our category, they're called large school districts, they're K-12 districts that are a little larger. Last year, in FY nineteen, these are our direct peers, uh, the number was twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars was the average cost. Ours proposed for this coming year is fifteen thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars, so over five thousand dollars more per pupil in similar districts last year than we proposed for next year. So, in that lens, um, you know, it's less than the state average and much less than our peers. So I wanted to just sort of paint with a broad brush and, uh, have Mary Alma take it away.
Well, Dave's made a lot of the points that I was gonna make, so, um, but, uh, I'll go, I'll go through these, uh, with you as well. The first, um, schedule we have here is basically, um, a, a summary of all of the expenses that go into our budget. Broken down primarily, um, by compensation and then all the other costs. The compensation costs, um, is, represent about seventy-nine percent of the total expenses of our entire budget. And for the most part, we don't have a whole lot of discretion as to what happens to these costs. Um, the vast majority of the salaries are based on, um, collective bargaining agreements. The healthcare costs are, um, dictated by the, uh, uh, now the, the state healthcare plan, which will go into effect, uh, for the second half of this, um, budget year. As Dave said, the, the new healthcare program, the statewide healthcare program did come out, um, for the state as a whole and for many of the district, is going to be, um, a very substantial increase over what the status quo is for those districts. Fortunately for us, um, I estim, I've done some, you know, estimates, and I don't think that it's going to result in a huge increase for, um, for Rutland City, because our current healthcare, um, benefits are very close to what, um, the, uh, this, what the recommendation was for the rest of the state. So, the, uh, the rate increase, um, which, uh, uh, is, basically makes up most of this twelve percent, is really going to be the, um, the net increase for us for next year, I believe. The only caveat there, and as Dave said, um, there are lots of things that are still kind of in flux in this, is that because of the changes to the, um, there are the proposed, well, the changes that were agreed to by the arbiter on the, on the state healthcare plan, V-Hi, uh, which is the organization that, you know, administers the, um, the healthcare plan for the state, has indicated that they will not be able to finalize the estimated rates that they gave us, um, that are included in here, uh, until they take into account some of the changes that, um, you know, that, that may result from, uh, the, the new plan. So there's a potential that that twelve percent may actually go a little bit higher. But, um, uh, you know, rough, um, you know, show of hands at a, a meeting I was at last week indicated that it's probably, you know, the, the, uh, the assumptions for that are probably already baked in there. So if there's a, if there's an increase, it would be very modest. So, uh, basically, there's a, you know, pretty, pretty substantial increase in the compensation costs. We did, you know, keep the, um, uh, what I'm calling program costs, which are the non-compensation costs, um, at the schools, um, flat. They're actually down a little bit overall, um, primarily because there've been, uh, there were some actual reductions in, uh, expenses at Stafford. We scaled back, uh, some of the athletics expenses, um, uh, basically, uh, covering, more than covering, uh, the costs that have been spent over the last few years, but just taking a little bit, uh, out of the budget that, um, was, uh, you know, a little bit higher than, uh, the, uh, than necessary for, uh, for the current programs.
Can I just add to that? So, Mary Alma has looked at several budget items, uh, where, uh, the actual expenses the last few years did not even come close to what was budgeted. And obviously, when you're trying to come up with a responsible budget, you wanna do that. So she found some budget items, uh, one of which was athletic travel, where, uh, the number was too high. It doesn't mean that students won't be able to take buses to games, it just means that in many different areas that she looked at, she kind of balanced the budgeting with actual expenditures over the last two or three years, and we found some money there.
Yeah, uh, it was, it was, it was, it was modest, as you see, you know, we're, you know, we're pretty close to being, you know, absolutely flat. One of the, one of the items that, you know, actually pushed that number up was, um, the, the Grove Street, um, facility that we had our last meeting at. The rent there is a bit higher than it was at, at House Street, so that's a, that's a number that, you know, had to be balanced, uh, in other ways, so, uh, we, we managed to do that. Special ed, um, no surprise, we've been talking about it all along, that's substantially up. And, um, we were able to actually reduce that a little bit, because one of the very expensive outplacement students that, um, you know, Pam had had in her, uh, previous, uh, estimates, has actually moved out of district, so we were able to take those costs out. But there's no guarantee that, uh, we won't, you know, have somebody move into the district at some point between now and, now and next year. So, uh, again, there's, um, there's always a little bit of, uh, you know, estimation and, and uncertainty there. Other than that, um, the cost for virtually, you know, if you add up, you know, all the other kind of ancillary costs for the district, they're pretty flat, um, and, um, you know, the, the, the increase of, you know, about, you know, four million dollars from FY twenty, FY twenty-one really is, you know, almost entirely in, in the compensation area. Are there any questions on that?
I just wanna, uh, point out, I think.
I just want to point out, I think this is important when you're taking a look at, and I appreciate the fact that the administration has come back after that last meeting. And I also want to thank you, Mary Alma. This is your first cycle through a very complicated and large budget. I think you've done an exceptional job, you know, providing us with the information in a way that we can certainly understand it. And I know this is, it's a steep learning curve to go through this the first time, I'm sure. But I just want to congratulate you. I think you've done a great job and service to us. I just want to point out, the important thing is, and the thing that I look at too, is that when you look at the tap on the ed fund, which is what the state is contributing, it's flat. It's flat from last year. It's only $80,000. So, the fact of the matter is, is that all of these things that are driving taxes, that are driving, not all of them, but so many of these things are driving, are far out of our control. If you're looking at the, this particular sheet here, for example, when you're looking at the per pupil spending, that's obviously calculation property, equalized tax rate, appraisal adjustments. We have nothing to do with those things. And that's what's going to drive the tax rate. So, and I know that there's some...
Except one, the appraisal adjustment.
Except one, the appraisal, which I know that the assessor is also looking at as well, the common level appraisal and perhaps even appealing that to the state of Vermont, which might be, might be in the office. So, anyway, I just want to point out that the tap on the ed fund is what it was last year, for all intents and purposes. So, all right, Allison.
Hurley, did you have something to clarify? Just to clarify, if you really look at what our original estimated equalized pupil was at our last meeting, we would be, our increase would be less than 3/4 of a percent. And, but because of that recalculation for the equalized, number of equalized student pupil, that is also out of our, out of our reach too, so.
Allison.
Did you want to respond to that?
Well, I was going to say, you know, when Dick says that, you know, the tax rate number is really, you know, after the ed funding, you know, the calculations are kind of out of our control and the parameters there. Basically, I did, you know, some analysis of that. And there's an increase of about seven and a half cents in the estimated tax rate. And again, these numbers are still kind of in flux. So, you know, the state could be changing any of these parameters. Of that, five cents of the seven and a half comes from just the CLA drop in and of itself. So, again, you know, it, you know, it's a number that's given to us. You do the math, and that's what falls out.
That's why we're asking the assessor to go after it. Because, you know, that's a big drop from 99 to 96, essentially. And that's out of our control, yes, but maybe if we're successful challenging it, it would actually end up providing more state money to Rutland. That's a simple way to say it. So, we're going after that.
Right.
Allison.
So, my question was regarding the healthcare. Ann and I had the pleasure of going to the VSBA informational meeting last night.
Oh, good. It was a good meeting. I went to the one in Millbury last week.
Yeah. So, I guess I couldn't really ascertain. I thought we were in pretty good shape because we already do the 80/20. My main concern would be, and they really couldn't say how the impact would have us, but that the first dollars out of pocket now need to come from the district.
We already do first dollar out of pocket HRAs. And most of, more than half of our employees are actually on HSAs. And HSAs are, you know, 100% of the contribution from the district goes into HSA accounts on day one.
Okay.
Actually, I guess it's half and half. It's, you know, half in January, half in July. But, you know, come that date, all that goes out, doesn't, you don't have to wait to be reimbursed.
We're already doing first dollar is on us.
So, yeah.
So, that's no change. So, I guess the other concerning thing is the HRAs and HSAs. Are we still dividing them currently between January and July 1, half and half?
We are. But one of the, the big, I think the biggest difference for our employees on that plan is going to be that they will no longer be able to do HSAs on the gold CDHP plan, which is the standard plan that we have for our district right now. And, you know, if they want to continue to be funded into an HSA, they'll have to drop down to the silver plan, which has much higher deductibles. So, it would be more costly for them. But, you know, if we have a significant population of very healthy employees who, you know, would not be using, not be using those funds significantly, then it might be advantage to them. But again, since we're already funding those HSAs and I budgeted according to our status quo, it would not be, it would not be an increase in cost to the state, to the district.
So, in January of 2021, we have to pay the 100% of the HRA, HSA upfront. We can't divide it up, is what they said.
No.
So, do we have that budgeted?
The difference between the HSA and the HRA is the HSA is paid 100% out. The HRA is only paid as the funds are used.
No, that's, I think you misunderstand my question. So, we currently, at least when we contracted, we paid the money that we put into an HRA or HSA. We divided between January and June.
For the HSA only.
For the HSA only. Okay. So, that's not going to have a great impact on us. And that's budgeted for next January where we'll have double the cost, is basically what I presume because of our operating budget year.
Well, the answer to that is probably not because the employees who currently have HSAs now, and that's the, you know, 100% out the door, okay, cannot have HSAs going forward in the future. So, for example, I'll take myself as an example. If I was 100% funded on the HSA and I only used, say, $500 of the $2,100 single contribution, then I would essentially keep in my account for future use the difference, $1,600 difference. With an HRA, if I only had $500 worth of expenses, the district would only be responsible for paying $500, not the $2,100 that they would be out of pocket for the HSA.
So, I guess my question is, in the budget, as of January 2021, we have to put in the full amount instead of dividing it up. So, do we have that in the budget? Because that's going to be a change from how we currently do that. Because I know you said that this 12% was roughly the rate increase.
We have, we have, we have budgeted for the status quo. The status quo should be able to cover everything that's necessary. Because where, you're concerned about the split between the six months, okay?
Right. Because all of it has to be paid now in January.
I believe that instead of paying 100% out on HSAs, okay, we will only be paying maybe 70% on HRAs. And that would only be for the first, we would only have to pay half of the 70% in the first half of the year.
So, we don't front load the HRAs?
No. No, they're paid as they occur.
Okay.
So, you know, unless everybody gets really sick in, you know, between January and June, you know, we're, you know, we're good.
Okay.
Okay. Charlene.
So, do people have the option of getting a higher deductible plan so they can stay in the HSA? Or are you saying they're not going to have that availability? Because you're, it seems like you're saying that maybe that you're anticipating people will not pick the HSA.
They would have to, they would have to drop down to a higher deductible plan. The deductible would go from about $5,000 for a family plan to $8,000. So, the potential out of pocket would increase from about $800 to, you know, $3,800.
If they're really, if they're relatively healthy people...
If they're, if they're very healthy people, they, you know, some of those people may choose to do that. The premiums on that for the district would be a little bit lower, okay? And the HSA contributions would be effectively the same.
Cam?
Oh, yeah, I have four or five questions if I can. The first thing, on the first...
I'll cut you off after six, okay?
Okay. We have the, no, no, three more, three more. So, sorry, bad joke that we have the other. So, on the sheet, the first sheet on page one on food services, I noticed, I thought it was going to be $60,000. It looks like you got it down to a $50,000 increase. I was more concerned about, is this a one-time cost that is going to be, so that next year we would anticipate it would be about 1.3 instead of going up another $50,000? In other words, are there cost drivers that are built into the new contract? Because we went out to bid so that we're sort of starting again?
No, it's not, it's not contract driven. It's just driven by the fact that there's probably going to be an increase in food costs.
In actual food? Okay. So, and so that's...
Yeah, I could, you know, I could have, you know, done something like, you know, 1.2767, but, you know, it's probably, you know, easier just to do fairly round numbers and, you know.
And I, and maybe I just wasn't...
It's less than a 4% increase.
Okay. I wasn't as attentive in the previous years in terms of, because that seemed like a big number. And it does seem in the last three years, on the financing stuff, I presume that's the equivalent of debt service?
It is, yes.
What triggered, because I didn't think we were putting any new bonding out?
There's nothing new there. Basically, the different, I asked that question myself when I saw that difference. There was an error last year in what was, what was in the budget. It was too low last year.
Oh, okay. Well, that at least explains it isn't a huge increase because of the other stuff.
There's no increase.
The other thing is, I was trying to, on this, on our sheets, I was trying to find where Grove Street was, what section is that in?
Grove Street would be in the program cost section. That's part of the rent at the high school.
Just in terms of language, I was trying to find stuff. I did Howe and I did Grove and didn't come out with anything. And then, if I could read my own handwriting, something was important that I thought at one point. The, I guess the, I guess one of the difficulties that I have is probably, I'm a cook with a recipe as opposed to the overall chef that comes out with a great product at the end. And so, one of the problems I have with our current system, I guess I'm, rather than a question, I was just trying to set it up, is that we allow the transfer among funds. And so, from our perspective, when we're looking at the top level, trying to decide where those cuts are coming from, stuff, that's where it would have been helpful to see, we're not doing that 125,000 paving as opposed to just giving us a generic number that says we're reducing this. Because some of these, I would suspect, are phantom cuts because, again, we haven't been spending in the past.
No. If you look at, if you look at the facilities maintenance line, that's actually going down by something.
Right. I just would, would be helpful to identify what those things that caused it to go down. We talked about it sometime last time, about the paving and some of the other projects.
I think when we get into the committee, this is exactly why we're going to do what we do. Because, and these are very good questions, Cam. And I think that will, I think to some extent, will give you that process.
Going forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I hear it right now, but yeah. And because we have talked about it, yeah.
Okay. And the only concern I have is we act...
Did you get the detail in your email?
Yeah. But I, well, no.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, no, if it was specific projects, no. It was this.
Yeah, it was the hundred page.
119 pages, yeah.
Oh, right. And that's where I was looking for Grove Street and some of the other stuff that I couldn't find.
Sorry. I shouldn't have interrupted.
Okay.
I apologize.
The, and then...
I don't under, I, you know, I don't blame you for not being able to find a specific item in that 119-page document. But that's basically what I have to deal with in terms of rolling everything up. So, you know, my intention is to give you something that, you know, makes, you know, relative sense here as opposed to, you know, going down to that granular level, which is, you know, really difficult to make your way through.
And can I suggest that anyone, I know Ann did, and anyone else is welcome to meet with Mary Alma to have the specific questions answered? Because we might not know it generically, but we can dig down and get the answers, such as with the food service.
Okay. Well, the last question I had is that we acted a little shocked about the fact that special ed was going up and some of the other things. But actually, it was our contract that we approved that increased salaries 5% a year for three years in a row on the suggestion that we were getting, going to get better employees because we're having trouble recruiting. And I don't know, is that still the same pressure that we are not competing with other districts? I mean, it's a little off topic in terms of, but the, I see it as a budget increase. Next year, if we're arguing, we still can't get people and we need more generous enhancements.
At this point, the salary increases are basically dictated by the contract that we're in the middle of. And that contract runs through the end of this fiscal year, this fiscal year that we're budgeting. And, you know, will need to be renegotiated next year. And I think those are questions that are best, you know, delayed until we actually get into those discussions. There's nothing we can do about it for this budget.
And yes, you're right. There are shortages in special education teachers statewide. Same with math, same with guidance counselors and other specialties. And we're not the only district dealing with that.
Oh, right. No, it's just that's a cost push in future years. So, that's why I was concerned now. If we're looking at just this year, 3.2 looks good. But if it sets up, we got rid of some, yeah, further in the future. So, I'll stop. Thanks.
Thank you. Yep, Deana.
Just not to exhaust people with the HSA, HRA business, but I do feel there's a very, there's very much a lack of understanding of the difference between the two in the general public, but also within our school, our people working in the school and the people that may benefit from one or the other. So, I don't know how to, if there's a way for us to maybe have some type of a way to educate people on the, even though you have a high deductible plan, the HSA is a cumulative type of account.
I actually, I actually think that most employees in this district are pretty well-educated on the HSA, HRA benefits, which is why we have a very high percentage of the employees that are actually currently in the HSA. And I, my understanding, and of course, I haven't been here for very long, but my understanding is that the HSA is a relatively new offering for our employees. And it was pretty, pretty, you know, well-adoptioned. And I think it's, you know, unfortunate that the arbiter's decision, you know, is effectively going to eliminate it for the program that we do now.
The Vermont NEA's position as an organization is against HSAs for their employees. So, most, a good number, most districts where, when they were negotiating, that was the position that the, that the employees took is that they wanted HRAs. I think that was a difference here. Was that...
Well, I think it's clear.
Whoa, whoa. But now that's going away because of that arbiter's decision.
All right. Hurley.
I'm more of a statement than a question. One of the things I think that we really have to look at is a lot of these costs are outside of our realm. Right now in the legislature, there is, in committee, discussion about a statewide food service program, K through 12, being funded from the state ed fund for the first year or two. And then it's pushed off to all the districts where all lunches and breakfasts will be free. They're talking millions of dollars that are going to be coming down from Montpelier in cost to us and the districts. And that's one of the things that we have to really, we have to unfortunately take into consideration. And I'm hoping that some people will actually get on the bandwagon and start talking to Montpelier. Because a lot of the costs that we're getting involved with, like the special ed, the change in the specialized, special education funding, that's out of our control, you know? And we are stuck picking up these costs that the state has granted, you know, and sort of put down to us. So, like the food service, and that's what made me think of it, Cam. I was watching the news tonight and they're literally looking and they don't know if it's going to be $5 million or $50 million at the end that is going to have to be picked up by the districts in year three. You know, there's a big difference there. And there's a lot of things, just like health insurance is becoming out of our control and how it's done. That's my soapbox.
And just one final thing on the health insurance. As I said, I also went to the meeting up in Millbury that you went to in Mill River last night. One of the things that I wanted to be sure of, and they confirmed, is that we don't have the option, even if we wanted to, to provide better coverages or better benefits than, that are in the state plan. So, if we wanted to keep our employees with the option to have their, to keep their HSAs as they are today, we cannot do that. So, you know, that, that should be pretty, pretty clear. And the final thing on that is that the healthcare, the new healthcare program goes into effect for everybody in January of 2021. So, it will only impact the second half of this budget year. And I said, I expect that the impact is going to be relatively, relatively neutral for Rutland City. It is not neutral for the state.
Allison.
So, I have a question, which I think is more for David. So, you know, we're all obviously taxpayers in the city, it's great to see only the three point two percent, but I guess I have concerns that we are able to shift the budget so much to cover these expenses that are already contracted, or healthcare in such a way. I just want to be sure that the impact on our average student and on our facilities will not be felt by squeezing the budget, if you will.
The decorum in classes is likely to improve, not just because we've improved the decor, but because we've made sure that all the students are in the right places. Students learn in different environments, and this budget and the proposal that we'll bring back to you on expanding learning opportunities, make sure that there's a place for everyone. So, in terms of the student experience, in terms of activities, the arts, athletics, and most importantly, what happens in the classroom, will not change and hopefully will improve because of what we're doing with the alternative programs.
I'm going to make the motion now, we can debate after, and I believe the motion has to be all the articles for the ballot.
Actually, I wanted to make my fifty, my hundred thousand dollar cut, the contingency. So, I can't cut it after we agree to a amount.
No, no, I'm just saying, I need to get the motion on the table, and then if you were looking to make a motion to change the amount, we can do that while the main motion is done, am I correct?
Correct.
Yes.
It wouldn't, yeah.
It would not prevent you-
We're filling out the tree, so I didn't get what we're saying.
It would not prevent you from making that motion.
No, the effect would be the same, Cam.
We have to redo the entire wording, am I correct? But don't we have to do the articles for election due?
The motion would be amended.
Okay, so here is-
Well, I think you can-
We can amend the motion. So, I'm going to make the-
I may be able to stop it, but he's agreed to it.
The motion, shall the voters of Rutland City School District approve the school board to expend fifty-eight million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which is the amount the school board determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It is estimated that the proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of fifteen thousand nine twenty-seven per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is three point two percent higher than the spending for the current year.
I have a second.
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 All right. Questions, Cam?
Yeah, well, I guess my motion to amend would be to just cut that total amount by a hundred thousand, and if it had to come out of contingency, it had to come out of contingency. So, it would make it cleaner, and so instead of fifty-eight million, I just want to reduce that number by a hundred thousand. So, whether we link it to contingency or not, I'm open one way or the other.
Other Joanne.
So, I'm reluctant to take money out of a contingent fund that has been budgeted. We have interim superintendent, a new CFO, perhaps a new superintendent, and I, I just think that I'd rather have that money there and not spend it than have to go over budget. So, I, I'm not in favor of-
Can I just weigh in on this?
Yes.
And follow up what Joanne said. So, you have a fifty-eight million dollar budget, the contingency fund is less than one-half of one percent. You know, most nonprofits, most school districts, look at one to three percent contingency for unexpected changes, and we know that there are unexpected changes. So, when you look at that amount, you may or may not spend it, but having it there is helpful. And so, I, you know, no offense, Cam, but I don't think it's a good idea.
Right, well, I didn't even get to explain why I think it's a good idea before.
It's a very small part of, of the budget, and it might be needed.
No, no, I understand that, but the reason that I support the cut is because I, we didn't spend anything in the, in the FY nineteen budget, so we do have the discipline. The difficulty I have is that I think the way we're changing budgeting this year is that we're cutting out some of the funds that haven't necessarily, I just don't have confidence in the numbers that the estimates are there, and I just wanted to put people on notice, the fact that when you have money, it frequently gets spent. And so, I think we've gotten lax in the last year when we spent it on some things that weren't truly an emergency. So, I'm just trying to highlight, for the board's benefit, that when we are, we, I don't intend to vote for anything that is not an emergency out of that contingency fund. So, the issue for me is that we are conscious of the fact that we don't have issues coming up that aren't fully grandfathered by being looked at, and maybe the finance committee will solve that and sort of give me some confidence-
We'll get right to that, yeah.
That we were there.
And that's, and it's understood the intent as well. I, I fully understand that intent, Cam.
And I agree with everybody else, I love having a nest egg that says, if we have an emergency, we ought to be able to deal with it. I'm just sort of nitpicking on the fact that-
How we spent it.
The point's well taken.
And, and I think, Cam, I'm, I'm, I am against that at this point, because I think we do have a new, we, we have a new philosophy in the finance office and with the new superintendent, and I think that with the state doing some things that tend to be retroactive, in my mind, creates a need for a contingency, because we're not sure when a lot of these programs that are on the table, they're actually really discussing when they would actually be implemented. So, it makes me a little leery about cutting money from the contingency. And I understand your issue, and I think one of the things is, is that we need to, the finance committee, Finance and Planning Committee really needs to-
Boy, we're really jumping ahead, aren't we?
Bringing to us, bring to us truly emergency contingent items.
Do you tell everybody what they're going to get for Christmas before they?
No, I don't get them anything.
Joanne.
You know, it's just prudent fiscal practice to have a contingency fund, and I know you're making a political move, Cam, and it's fine, but I just, I, I just don't think it's wise right now. I think let's address that in the glorious committee, apparently, that's going to save the universe, and come up with some, some rules around contingency. I mean, I, I'm definitely think that that's a, a thing we should discuss.
I don't want to play with you people anymore.
I don't play with others, you should know.
I just had a point of order, because I don't, if Cam wants his to be a motion versus discussion, then we've done this wrong. And he said he'd like to make a motion, and then we discussed it, but Hurley's motion was still on the table, so just a point of order for-
Hurley's motion is on the table, right.
For what we're doing, that Cam hasn't really-
Yeah, you could amend it.
You could propose an amendment, Cam.
And you could support that amendment, because you would, made the original motion.
Yeah, so, and I was giving you options, that either we just do the hundred thousand a set, or say, out of contingency.
You'd have to amend it, then we'd have to vote on it, and then we'd have to have another motion. Because right now, if it's truly a motion, we shouldn't be discussing it now, because we have another motion on the table.
And he hadn't actually formally made that motion, so your motion is still the one that's actually on the table.
You made it as a motion, we just jumped in.
You seconded it. Then I can redo his motion.
His motion.
All right, so, I would like to rescind, rescind my motion.
Second.
Okay, second.
Okay, and now, Cam.
Thank you, I'd like to just, and I realize that it's symbolic, and so, I get a little antsy when you say it was political. I don't, and maybe you use the term differently than I do.
Yes, I do, Cam.
Okay.
Let's continue.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. So, I just, and so, in that instance, I just want to provide some conscience to say that maybe we should be three percent, and we just had tighter controls. But this year, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we cut the contingency fund by a hundred thousand dollars to foster increased financial stability by forcing us to be more budget conscious. And it may be a grandiose plan on my part, but at least it is what I'm asking for.
So, what the hell's your motion?
No, his motion, I understand this, this is, this is clear, okay.
Okay.
All right, so the motion is on the table, okay, so this is, this is, Hurley has rescinded his motion, which was a little ballot language, okay? We're all clear about that. Cam has offered a motion which would be to cut the contingency line out of, out of the fiscal year twenty-one budget by one hundred thousand dollars. So, that is the motion on the table. In effect, the second motion, if that were approved, would be Hurley's motion with a change in the amount, otherwise, the original. So, that motion, Ann has seconded it. Is there any further debate on the motion? All right.
No, I just like a roll call.
That's, that's fine, okay, so the motion on the table is to cut one hundred thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty-one contingency budget. Matt?
Nay.
Yep, oh.
Cam?
Yay.
I'm abstaining.
Allison?
Nay.
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 Okay, so, it was-
And I do would like to acknowledge Ann for allowing the second to go first.
No, 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 and I, and I apologize, we got a little confusing, but that was, that was clear, and Allison, thank you for pointing that out. That is the right way to go about that.
All right, so now I'd like to remake my motion. Shall the voters of the city of Rutland School District approve the school board to expend fifty-eight million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which is the amount the school board determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in an education spending of fifteen thousand nine twenty-seven per equalized pupil. The projected spending per equalized pupil is three point two percent higher than the spending for the current year.
Okay, second, all right.
Second, second.
Because nobody has anything to say.
I would call for a roll call vote.
All right, call for a roll call vote. Cam, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something before we moved on to that, and so, the, of course, now I forgot what I was doing. Oh, that I supported the last two budgets, I thought we were very fiscally responsible, I thought we were two point nine, and we were something the other stuff. I have a little less confidence in the numbers this time, and so, it's ultimately the, the, the public's position, but I'm just not comfortable voting yes this year.
Okay, all right, so we have the motion on the table, I'll start on this side, Ann.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
And in my traditional vote, no.
Yes, okay, all right, so then the motion passes, so we have some documents to sign. And then Betty, that can be forwarded to the city clerk for the ballot. Okay, thank you very much, and Mariama, again, thank you, Dave, thank you very much for the work in this-
Thank you, one, one quick thing, while it's fresh in your mind. In December, when we presented the budget, there was a menu, and at that time, Mariama was able to show you, if you wanted to add something or take something away, what the impact would be on the per pupil cost, which is what goes on the ballot. Do you want us, or do you want them, next year, to, to do that sort of thing? Or are there other ways that you'd like to see the budget presented next year? And I'm only asking you now, because it's fresh in your mind, is there a different way you'd like to see it presented next year?
I think that tool was great. The interactive tool was really helpful.
I like that.
Agreed.
Try to recreate it next year, if I can remember how.
Or if you have other ideas, let her know.
Down to Jim, actually, too, down there. Jim, you want that ballot language specifically, so if you can give that to Jim, too. And also, there's one of these for him.
You got an extra one coming for him?
There should be an extra one of these coming, too, for Jim. You know, it just makes it easier instead, yeah, that one can-
I don't want to be on policy.
We can, we can move that, that's what we have existing. All right, so we're moving on to the next item, which is a committee formation, and there's been a lot of chatter about that previously. People are great at keeping secrets.
Open set.
All right, so, what we are doing with the committee structure is that, now that the board has, is meeting monthly, what we want to do is establish a more robust work of the committee, so that the board is not operating as a committee of the whole, which it is, which it has been doing for, for some time. So, what you have before you is, is a few things here, I just want to, on a point out, and Hurley put this together, thank you, Hurley, for doing that, and obviously, we have alterations here. But what we want to do is establish a, a regular meeting schedule for the committees. Now, I understand that there may be times that the committee does not need to meet, and I am certainly not one to recommend that you meet for the sake of meeting. Lord knows that we all have to spend enough time in meetings like that. But in any event, so I want to just kind of review what we're, what we're potentially looking at in the appointments. And in some cases, these committees already exist, the name might have changed a little. So, we have, so there's, the, the way it's, the way it would work is that the board meets the second Tuesday of every month, with the exception of July, I don't believe we meet in July.
No.
So, we would have committee meetings that fourth Tuesday of the month, and do it in a way that the timing of it allows the committees to meet, you know, before and during kind of the same time, but with getting out a little bit earlier. So, buildings and, what was it called before, buildings and?
Grounds.
Grounds, whatever.
Grounds, yeah.
We're, we're, we're calling that now facilities, because it really gets into all facilities, and that's just a name change, it doesn't really change the work, but I think there's going to be more robust work that's going on in that. That would meet the fourth Tuesday of the month, from five thirty to six thirty, and that would meet here. And again, all committee meetings will be warned, there'll be meetings taken, meeting minutes taken at all committee meetings, those meeting minutes will be appropriately posted and included in board packets as well. So, the composition of that committee remains the same. Mr. Cavakis is chair, Mr. Johnston is not, Ms. Shimp are the building, excuse me, the facilities committee representatives, and that has not changed. Now, again, if you are interested in committee assignments, they can be made. The new committee is Finance and Planning, and Ms. Pensick, Commissioner Pensick, has agreed to chair that committee. I am appointing her as chair. Mr. Johnston, Commissioner Johnston, Commissioner Goldberg, and Commissioner Seward be appointed to that committee. I think that creates a really good blend, that's two CPAs. Dina and Cam bring interesting perspectives, big picture and detailed perspectives, that I think will round out that committee. But in addition to facility, or excuse me, in addition to finance, and as Dave had talked about before, is wrapping our arms and wrapping our head around this concept of planning for the district, and particular planning as it relates to budgetary items, the bigger things that we really should be looking at long term. Not curriculum planning, not type of planning like that, but certainly, you know, Dave has talked about the need for a comprehensive capital plan, and really understanding a bigger picture, and this is going to allow, I think, a group to work very closely with Mariama, the finance team, and the superintendent. Now, what this committee, it will ask this committee to do, and I think it's good for all the committees, is to develop a committee charter, in, in terms of what the scope is going to be, how, its rules of engagement, the type of things it'll be looking at, I think that's the first thing I'd like to see out of that group. That would meet the fourth Tuesday of the month at six thirty. So, we would have the facilities committee meet at five thirty, and the facilities and planning meet at six thirty. So, we also have two other committees, and these can be held in, you know, different locations, obviously, and we'll make sure that we're not, in some cases, like for example, Joanne chairing that committee, probably you don't, you said you didn't want to do the, the policy. So, Policy Committee, Erin is the chair of that, that will remain the same, and that would be at six thirty. And then, Staff Relations, now Staff Relations, which Allison chairs, is primarily a, it's negotiations, and we have one item that, that is going to need to begin negotiations soon. So, that committee really, and as Allison knows, you've, you've been around the negotiations previously, and Ann and Erin also assist in that, is basically a schedule that's going to be as needed. I mean, it's, it's generally whenever negotiations are scheduled. So, we may have that, that fourth Tuesday of the month at five thirty, but that's going to be fluid, that's really going to be dependent upon what, what negotiations, and in some cases, you're not going to meet for a long period of time, because there aren't any negotiations, once you get this next one settled, it'll be another year before you begin REA negotiations. So, you look like you want to say something.
I, I see an error.
Well, there's an error in terms of the, you know.
Yeah, because, and I also, when I cut and pasted the others, I didn't have Matt on there, Matt, what?
Oh, well, I was going to ask our-
What committees were you on?
Pension board is not there yet. Pension.
Pension.
These are, those are, those are committee representation.
What other committees were you on?
The board representation.
The, the performance.
The PEI, yeah, and that one right now is, is, that's kind of special as well, so, these are the standing committees of the board, but-
Could be planning, too.
That could be planning, yeah.
So, that probably would be the committee, you know, would be that planning.
Would you come, come, come home to planning with us?
That'd be a good, good place for you.
And the pension is really out of our control when that gets scheduled.
Yeah.
But we're still part of the-
So, is this acceptable, and this, this actually gets us in a formal schedule and gets us disciplined to use the committees in, in, I think, the best way possible. It allows, I think, for some rich conversation. Now, again, in the case of the Policy Committee, Facilities Committee, those committees are well established, they know the- the committee members, um, and really be looking at, at, uh, how we can do that. So I think, Cam, you bring up a lot of good points and, over the deliberations, and this is a good opportunity for, uh, commissioners to, you know, get closer to the action and feel comfortable and confident about the decisions they have to make in terms of resource allocation. So I like, I like this approach. Is everyone okay? Matt?
I was also noticing Mike is, uh, missing from.
What did you do here?
Ah. Betty, would you give me?
I thought Mike was on Staff Relations.
Mike is, Mike is on Staff Relations.
No.
And then I think that was what he was on.
Staff Relations, right?
I thought there was only three of us.
Right. Maybe, oh, he's on activities.
The building.
Building.
And he was on the activities.
No, I don't think he was on.
Well, Activities and Athletics is, it's a separate one.
Activities and Athletics.
Yeah, we'll check on that. I mean, again, if he's on that committee, he's still on that committee. Nothing changes. Basically, Facilities or Finance and Planning is the new one. So all the other committee assignments stay.
The other ones, so the, the, the soup, like the review committee, all that stuff.
That stays the same.
Stays the same.
And those are ad hoc committees. These are the established, uh, regular committees. Yes, Dave?
So I wanted to just ask, uh, two committees to look at some issues that I think have long-term impact. So the first committee would be Erin, Hurley is the chair, Allison and Cam, and that's Facilities. I think we've got to take a fresh look at Facilities, not just the facilities study that we need to do and long-term capital improvement, but really looking at the roof projects, the solar projects, and making sure that we have, that everyone's up to speed on what's been planned or what should be planned. And so I'm going to ask you to sort of dig into that, um, with Michael and with Mary Alma going forward, and we have some ideas about how we might save some money in that going forward. And the second is on your, uh, committee, Joanne, the, uh, long-term planning. It's really a strategic planning for the school system. And so you might decide to, uh, bring in some of the smart people in the audience here to help with that. Maybe look at enrollment changes. Uh, I know it's somewhat arcane, um, but the, the state allocation formula is so important. Take a look at the future, what could happen to Rutland as the state takes on more and more responsibility or authority, let's say, uh, and there may be other responsibilities coming our way. And then maybe you want to analyze specific programs, whether it's the lunch program or other programs, and really use a committee process with the smart people here, along with the smart people here, to look at that. The last thing is, and I'm going to be beating a dead horse on this until June 30, we really need to understand and advocate strongly for this weighting formula that could result in, uh, millions of dollars going forward for the city school district. Uh, we have a couple of representatives in a really good place for us now, and that's Larry Coopley, who is the vice chair of House Education from Rutland, and Peter Fagan, who's a vice, is he vice chair of appropriations?
He's ranking member of appropriations, House Appropriations.
Isn't he at TARI, though?
Huh? Yeah, this is his last legislative term.
It's going to happen now because it goes through ELCAR, the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, and we need to be at the table. And I plan on being there myself, but it's something that you really need to study and keep track of, you know, long after I'm gone, because it really is a key to the financial future. So there's a lot on that plate.
So, uh, we will do regular committee report outs. Um, Joanne, if you could, if you could at least schedule a meeting prior to, um, the next, uh, board meeting.
The next board meeting, next Tuesday?
No.
Uh, it's a special meeting.
Special, that's, yeah, that's a special meeting. That's not for that purpose, but, um, so we'll get, yes, Cam?
Well, I just had, I sort of maybe have to give up some committees, but we have some overlap, so I don't know if we can make it half-hour meetings, um, because I think Allison has the same problem.
I think, I don't think they'll all meet the same.
We won't.
Not going to meet every month.
No, you don't have to, yeah. In other words, that's when it's scheduled, doesn't mean it will have to happen. In the case like Staff Relations, that's going to be, I mean, the likelihood of it actually being that day is.
I'm going to, yeah, we're going to assume that the Staff Relations will meet whenever